And there we are.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to a special call meeting of the Jessman County Board of Education. It is a few minutes past six. We've had a little bit of technical difficulty getting going this morning, or this afternoon, or evening, wherever we are, excuse me. But I think we've got enough here to get going. So, Mr. Moore, if you want to call the role.
This is the floor chair, Steven Scribner.
Here.
Vice Chair Denise Adams.
Denise, can you hear?
Barely.
Sorry, you might want to turn your volume up just a hair.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Amy Day. Can you hear Mary?
Matt, your vol- your volume is a little bit low.
Can you hear me, Amy?
Mine?
Am I good now?
Amy, can you hear? I think Amy's having an issue hearing.
Okay, we have a visual of Amy.
All right.
Bobby Welch?
Yep.
Okay, Amy Day one more time? Okay, she is present, so I do see her here. We have four present, we have a four.
All right. All right, everyone, we've had a chance to look at the agenda for tonight. There's only one change I'd like to recommend to that, and that is removing item number D2, Superintendent Evaluation. I'd like to table that one until next week sometime, either most likely, I guess, it'd be a special call meeting. We're just not prepared to discuss that this evening. And I don't believe, Howard, we can make any additions, so that would be the only subtraction we've got.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments about that recommendation?
No.
Okay. Denise, Amy, can you guys hear me?
Not easily.
We can, I can, okay.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of adopting the agenda with the exclusion of item D2? Or I guess, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the, excluding item D2?
Motion to adopt the agenda with exclusion of D2.
Okay. I'll second that motion. All those in favor of adopting the agenda with the revision, say aye.
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 Those say no? All right. Mr. Moore, the floor is yours to discuss reopening school.
Yes, do you want to give me control of the screening?
Absolutely, sure. All right, you should be the host now, Matt.
Okay, you got me?
It's coming up, there it is.
All right. So, what I wanted to do is take a moment, and I know you guys are going to want to look at this in more detail, know that it is in your archive documents, but this gives you a sense of what we're talking about for the start of next school year. And this is really, more than anything, a roadmap to the steps we're taking in the sequence of what we're recommending for next year. And I do just want to go over this with you guys and get your lesson moving forward, and just know that a lot of details have to be worked out, because we really are waiting for a lot of information to come from the state level. What you see here is three columns. The right column identifies the different phases at the federal level, which I think we all understand how the state phases kind of coincide with that. But the Phase 3 is with a lot of the restrictions lifted, so we can have more typical practices. Phase 2 really has those restrictions that were operating in the sense of not being able to have more than 15 people gathered at a time. And then Phase 1 is some of the current restrictions that we have. If you look at the center column, that is, again, the sequence of what we're recommending moving forward. And note also that the third column is running simultaneously to the second column. So, the model that we would prefer to transition back to is the traditional school model. Obviously, we would have to meet some of the expectations for social distancing, all the safety pieces and such, but we want to have that traditional model. And then you note in here, this was from our previous discussions, it is our expectation that we would have simultaneously extended school services going on, and those would be after-school services to really get our students caught up. If we aren't able to start with a traditional school model, our second preference is to utilize a late start model. And again, that would be a traditional type of a school model. And some districts are going ahead and setting particular dates for late starts, but the challenge that I have with that is not having as much information as needed right now. So, what we have done is developed a series of potential late start calendars, and I would be meeting with the calendar committee next week to show those. So, we're looking at models, if we were to start a week late, two weeks late, three weeks late, and so on. But really feel like that is more situation-dependent. If we had some information that made us, that suggested that a two-week later start would allow us to have a traditional model versus a virtual, then we would be encouraging that to the Board of Education. What we also have here with our traditional model, and again, running simultaneous to that, is the virtual piece. That's what's in the far-right column. And what we're talking about there is a model where students that aren't able to return to school because they are medically fragile, or live with someone in their household who is medically fragile, or who just elects to not return to health-related concerns, that would be running simultaneously. That is definitely different than non-traditional instructional days, in the sense that it'd be more like a college course, when you think about their online learning opportunities. So, it would start and end with an expectation that students would have an entire virtual experience. That obviously requires virtual outside learning regulations that we're able to practice in. So, the Kentucky Department of Education has let us know that they are going to pursue that flexibility with us, but it would probably come in the form of an executive order from the governor. Do want to point with the Virtual Academy, again, those would be students that aren't able to, or elect not to, come to a traditional school setting. So, those students would also be electing to not participate in field trips, after-school care, or things such as extracurricular sports and such. So, those would be the families, again, that aren't comfortable with returning to a traditional model due to something else related. So, if we aren't able to operate with a traditional school model or a late start, then the next model that we are exploring is a scheduled rotation for in-person classes. And you probably have heard the governor talking about different possibilities there, or our Commission of Education, but what we're really talking about is an A day and a B day, so half your students would be coming one day and another, the other half another day. It could also be in the form of an A week and a B week. See lots of challenges with this one, as we're starting to get into the details of trying to figure out how to make this work. We see significant budget implications, significant challenges with time, getting all of the students where they need to be, and addressing all of their needs. And then another thing that we see as a big challenge with this one is how families will be able to manage this, because obviously, most of our families will have parents that are working, and we just see big challenges with them trying to figure out how to manage their students if they're going to be working, if we have partial days or A and B days or weeks. I do want to go back to the top one and just mention this. I'm going to recommend to you guys that we not explore the option of an early start. And that was one of the governor's recommendations originally, recommending that we not explore the early start, again, because we feel like we need to take, have some time to develop these models, and feel like a whole lot more information is coming each day. The more time we have to prepare, the more likely we're going to be successful in this. And then, just from a personal perspective, as we think about restrictions being lifted for our families, I have a lot of challenges with families going from the restricted settings right into starting school. I really want to honor the family time together, and make sure that we are letting our families have as much of a summer as they can for their vacations and time out in the community. So, if I go to the next level, and this is the most restrictive, and this is what we're operating under right now, that would be Extended NTI, and that would be actually starting the school year with our NTI model. And again, this is sequential, so that's absolutely the least preferred model. I want to also note some bullets that we have here below. NTI, or Home-Based Instruction, can also be utilized periodically throughout the year the way that we're currently utilizing it. So, if we have emergency days due to inclement weather or something like that, we can still access NTI days. Also, if we were to have a student who may have symptoms, they may be able to utilize some type of an online learning experience until they're able to transition back to a traditional classroom setting. All of the models, we are working on social and emotional support and instruction provided in those areas to support the students. All of the models also include the health and safety plans for implementing, and then there is an expectation that we have a contact tracing program, which has already been outlined for us by the State Department. Are there any questions about the model, and then I'll talk to you about some of the next steps that I was planning on taking?
Nope.
Are we seeing everything on the screen about the Virtual Academy? It would appear that we are.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And again, this one would take state approval, which they said that they're going to pursue. But Denise, with this, what makes this really different is, you know, it is anticipated, and we already know in Jessman County, some parents, some families have already told us that they're not going to be returning to a traditional model next year. So, it gives us an opportunity to still educate those students and connect with them. What I really see is somebody overseeing the entire virtual program, so that we're not asking teachers that are teaching traditional instruction, instruction to have to do this in the future. And then it also gives us the ability to truly monitor the progress from, you know, how the students are doing with the teachers instructing it, but then also, what I would see is, the person that's overseeing this model would be doing the professional development that would really target the virtual learning. They would be doing virtual walkthroughs and checking in on those classes and seeing how they're doing, and then all of those other requirements that we would have. By step at you, like evaluating those teachers, that would be a virtual evaluation process, where they would go in and do those observations of those programs and give feedback on the quality of instruction.
Matt, there was one thing I saw in there under the virtual about, stood right there, I was going to just a hair if you would please. Students participate in the Virtual Academy model will not be able to participate in in-person programs. In other words, the question we'll get is, can my student be part of Virtual Academy but play on the football team? And the answer is no.
Yeah. And what we're talking, the reason that we were communicating that is really to make sure that they understand that going in, because I think if they're going into the virtual model, it's because they don't want to have contact.
No, that makes sense.
Yeah, so we just felt like it was really important early on to make sure that everybody's aware of that.
I agree.
Yeah, that, you know, school dances, we wouldn't want to have them going in with a misunderstanding of what that would mean.
Yeah, no, that makes, that makes total sense.
Have there been specific, and you may have said this, Matt, I'm having a really hard time hearing tonight. I'll take a break here in a second and change my hearing aid batteries, in case that's the issue, but have you already identified a program, a format for doing the virtual?
We started some of the exploration, and what we've done, Denise, is we have a district-wide committee that is working on all of this, and then we have four subcommittees.
Say that again, that last part, we have?
We have four subcommittees.
Okay.
And one of those subcommittees is the Office of Teaching and Learning, making sure that we're addressing all of the instructional needs, which will include that virtual component.
Okay.
And then we have a committee that is addressing the social-emotional learning, and then we have a committee that's addressing the safety and wellbeing of our students and staff, and then the visitors in the school, and then we have one that's over operations. And then I'm obviously connected with all of that work.
Yeah.
All right.
So, my ask for is, I do want to move forward with this work, and I do want you guys to know that we're not doing this in a silo. Obviously, I talked about the committee work that is happening within Jessman County, but we are also actively participating in all of these categories with the Kentucky Department of Education. Honored that Pat Glass was selected to be part of the State Committee on the safety efforts for students and staff, so she's actually working alongside in developing state-level guidance, so very appreciative there. And then, also, we're part of KASA, KASA, who's gathering information on different models throughout the state, and then I'm meeting weekly with our local cooperative that has the 22 districts that are close to us, so hopefully, there's some similarities in what we're implementing to everyone around us. There we go. I am planning on doing, after this, with your guys, okay, continuing the committee work, want to send out a survey to parents this week to just get some sense of where they stand right now about a virtual versus a traditional model, knowing that they don't have to select it right now, but just want to know some of their thoughts, so that we get a sense of how many students we're talking about. Also, want to do a staff presentation on the information that I shared with you guys this evening, and then give them an opportunity to ask questions. And then, I mentioned this earlier, next week, I'm planning on meeting with the calendar committee to talk to them about our work moving forward. And then, we have been meeting, we typically have principals' meetings every month, but we have been meeting weekly up to this point, just because, again, there's so many changes, and we will meet at least every other week this summer, so that we can work out some of the details that are involved in these plans. And then, from the board, again, just knowing our work moving forward, I have told the teams that are working, the subcommittees working on these plans, to go ahead and start working with, out of our CARES Act monies, so the monies that are giving, being given to us for this purpose, I've asked them to go ahead and make a plan for ESS and social, social-emotional learning in the range of $300,000. So, that's a starting place for them. And then, we've spent about $100,000 and anticipate spending that on some of the things that we've had to respond to, to include the food service program that we offered this summer, to include a chromebook replacement, and then the PPE that we're needing to purchase. So, it's that range of stuff. I also have interest, we have our Transportation Director that is retiring in December, and...
I'm sorry, who's retiring?
Our Transportation Director.
Oh.
And typically, we would replace him, or look for the replacement to overlap in the October timeframe, but I would like to go ahead and look for somebody right now. I think this is when the pull will be the strongest, and the work that we're talking about doing is pretty significant in the area of transportation, if you just look at the models that I have there. And then, obviously, somebody supporting the Virtual Academies. So, are there any concerns with that information?
No, not at all. I think that makes perfect sense, Matt.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you, and we're going to move on it quickly, and I'll give you guys as many updates, but again, we'll start getting a little bit of information from parents, and later on this week, I'll try to share quite a bit more with our staff and get some of their input, so we can make sure we're moving in the right direction.
Okay.
And with that said, that's it for communications. I am going to, don't forget to tell you this, at our work session next week, we will go over all of our sports information. As it is right now, we want to practice all of the flexibility that Kentucky High School Athletic Association is offering. So, we've developed plans to do that, which will include training our coaches, training our students, and then monitoring our work in those areas. But feel good about what we've done thus far, and I'll share that with you guys on the work session on Monday.
Okay. That sounds good. All right, Matt, so does this take us to the action items?
Yes, sir.
All right, you want to talk to us a little bit about action item number one?
Yes, we have our Enterprise Fleet Management representative is helping us replace our outdated vehicles, and the next one up is replacing one of our vehicles in our maintenance department, and we wanted to go ahead and make the recommendation that you approve the maintenance department paying for a $21,575, $79 vehicle.
Any questions or comments from board members?
No. No.
All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item C1.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving item C1, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those say no? Okay, Matt, you want to talk to us a little bit about item number two?
And Steven, were you wanting to go ahead and pull this one till Monday, or do you want to be...
Um, why don't, why don't you talk to us a little bit about it, and then I'll share kind of my general thoughts, and we can decide, you know, let everyone else weigh in on whether they want to vote on the motion now, or if we want to table it and discuss it in greater detail.
Okay. So, if you guys recall, a couple months ago, we had made the recommendation for a salary increase of 3%, anticipating that we were going to get additional federal dollar, our state dollars, and hoping that that was going to be a 4.5% increase on average across the board. And in light of our current situation, we've met, I guess, four different times to talk about this, and feel like that we're not comfortable enough to make a recommendation that we stay with a 3% or higher type of a raise. I want you guys to know that we did look at the numbers. We feel like this year, we will be generating an additional $4.4 million, and we will be spending, without a raise, an additional 2.4. So, I think the Board of Education has done a nice job up to this point, looking to make sure that we have the monies for the raise, but again, I don't feel comfortable enough making a 3% or higher raise. And what we've done is sat down and looked at the budget, and I feel like it is manageable if we were to do a 2% raise, knowing that we would still have a lot of flexibility because of the work that we've done the past four years to address our desire to try to pay our employees more. So, what you have in the attachment is a 2% raise with a, the only difference being for the bus drivers, which we had put at $16.
You know, my thought, and just in chatting with Matt about it previously, was that, you know, we're still pretty, we're still uncertain as to what our financial hit's going to look like from the state this year. And so, one of the things we had talked about was possibly tabling this until the fall, when we have a better sense of what the financial picture looks like, and then looking at options then, based on what we know. And so, you know, I'm definitely committed to doing this. We discussed, you know, this back in, what, Matt, was it February or March? I think it was February. But obviously, you know, we got a massive monkey wrench thrown at us, what, two weeks later, three weeks later? So, I think my only concern is just being prudent in this and wanting to make sure we have a full financial picture before we commit to doing anything like this. But what I would like to recommend is that we table this for now. We discuss it in greater detail at our work session on Monday, so that we've all got time to ask appropriate questions, and maybe get some more detail from Jason, and then possibly take it up at a special call meeting after that, or even the late-June meeting that we have on the calendar for June 22nd. So, I'll let Debbie, Amy, Bobby, and Denise kind of weigh in with their thoughts.
I agree, I think it should be tabled until we see what's going to happen.
I think it should be tabled as well, but I'm still concerned about the teacher assistants, and I think we need to really try to take care of them somehow, some way, because they make a lot less money than the bus drivers do, and that's a big area of concern for me.
Okay. So, Amy, do you have anything, Denise, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I'm just asking, thinking about timelines. Matt, you know, what's in statute, how much time do we have to make these decisions? And is there any leeway, you think, this year? We're not the only board in this situation.
And to give you a little bit of a perspective too, this year, we, our projection for ending the school year is to have a reserve of 11.7. Without the raises, I would project that we will have a 14.0. Without the raises, I would project that we will have a 14.1.
What are we required to have? Is that the?
I think it's about, is that 5 million? Is that correct, Jason?
Yes, that's the recommended range would be 5 million, because that's 5% of our expenditure, but we can bottom out at 2 million. But that's when the state would come in and take over control.
Oh, that'd be bad.
Debbie, Amy, Bobby, Denise, would you all be okay with maybe we table this for now? We discuss it in greater detail next Monday, six days from now. We're going to have to do a special call meeting at some point next week or the week after, for the purpose of wrapping up superintendent's evaluation. So this maybe would be something, once we just get a little bit clearer picture from Matt and Jason, maybe next Monday, we might feel better about moving forward with his recommendation or possibly going in a different direction, based on what we hear. But I believe everything Matt says about it, I just think, instead of discussing it here in the board meeting, it might be better for a work session, you know, to go into a little bit greater detail is all.
So just to clarify real quickly, Stephen, one question, just to clarify, Jason and Matt, the recommended statute amount is 5% of our total budget, is that right? Which would be 5 million?
Yes.
And if we do these raises, we would, you've calculated that we would still be at 11?
I recommend, yeah, if we do that, let me tell you real quick what it would be. Or Jason, if you can, tell me if we do the raise.
I'm working on it as well. You may be me to it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to close.
And this is something we can discuss in the next meeting. I just wanted, I really was just clarifying what I had heard because I'm having such a hard time hearing tonight, even with.
Yeah, so if we were to do the 2% raises, we would be projected right now, based off of the budget that was submitted in May, to be at 11.1 million. And right now, I'm projecting we're going to be at 11.7 at the end of this school year. So we'll be spending down almost $600,000 if we do the 2% raise.
And we were planning on spending down a little bit more than that, but the CARES Act dollars is giving us a little bit of a cushion, but the unknown, which I know is concerning to Stephen and Bobby, is any potential SIC impacts. So we're tracking that piece too, knowing that there is, you know, they haven't committed or told us of anything, but we know that there could be some impact there, so.
Yeah, and that's, I think Matt said it well there. That's the only concern I have, is just making a decision like this without having a full picture. Obviously, in February, when times were different, this made a lot of sense, and I think everyone was very supportive of this, of this direction. You know, on the surface, I guess I'm in favor of just waiting until we know more, because the way I understand it is that if we do get a clear picture, let's say in October or November, and the hit's not nearly as big as maybe it could be, we have the ability to retroactively go back to July 1 and institute maybe the same aggressive pay raise we had discussed in February, or maybe something that comes in a little bit below that. But either way, if you all are okay, I'd rather just move it to Monday's meeting, where we can discuss it a little bit more in greater detail, and then, again, at the next upcoming special meeting or the June 22nd meeting, we could take an official action on it.
I think that's a great idea, to table it for right now.
Very good.
Okay.
I wanted to just jump in and say.
Howard, do we need a motion to officially table that, or do we just take no action on it?
You could just take no action and then put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
So just to be clear, all the board members are okay, just taking no action on that for right now?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Matt, tell us about item C3.
This is just the approval of our 2021 pay distribution. This is just a requirement that we have to get this information out so that everybody can start anticipating when they can receive their paycheck. So it's my recommendation that you approve the pay distribution schedule as published.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we approve the pay distribution schedule.
I'll second it. All those in favor of approving item C3, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, Mr. Moore?
The final action item is the cafeteria seating bids for West Jessmyn High School's cafeteria, and the bidding process had several interested, and one that received the highest-weighted score for our criteria was J.W. Associates Equipment Specials. And it's my recommendation that you accept him for the bid award.
Any questions from board members?
No.
All right, Bobby?
Nope.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve item C4 regarding West Jessmyn High School's cafeteria seating bid.
Second.
I couldn't tell who got in there, Teresa, I'll let you make the call on that. All those in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Aye.
All right. At this point, that concludes the action items. I'm going to make a motion that we enter executive session for the purpose of discussing opposed or pending litigation against the public agency by individual employer under KRS 618101C. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, I think that was definitely Debbie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.